All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the December meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits for consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. Tonight, it looks like we already have six members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. But to make it official, let's do roll call first. Mario DeFovio. Paul O'Brien. Joe D'Angelo. Chris Judgeeats.
Here I am, Rocky like a hurricane.
Fantastic. Kelly Weiss is not currently here and Manny Priest.
Here.
All right. Second item on the agenda is the approval of the November meeting minutes. Anybody see anything in the meeting minutes that they want revised or changed? Or is there a motion to approve? Motion by Joe to approve. All right. Second by Chris, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. All right. Next item on the meeting agenda are seeker determinations. So in this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. Commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear. And after all questions have been answered, the commission will deliberate and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. To all the applicants that will be presenting tonight, we ask that you please state your name and address for our records before beginning your presentation. And we ask that any member of your team who will be speaking, please give their name and address for our public record. All right. So for tonight, our first and only secret determination is for the applicant Eagle Properties LLC. Project address is 131 Holly Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of an existing two-story building into a congregate living facility with six sleeping units in the R three multi-unit dwelling district. All right. Is there anyone here for the 131 Holly Street project? All right. Come on up. All right. Since you're our first victim tonight, could you just make sure that the microphone has a green light on there?
Hello.
There it is. Perfect. Thank you.
Hey, Kyle Weeks, Chanis Anderson Architects, Jeff Smith, Chanis Anderson Architects, and we're presenting the application for 131 Holly Street for Eagle Properties LLC. So the project is it's an existing brick four-bedroom, single-family home built in 1929. It's two stories above grade with a full basement and a detached garage. The owner would like to obtain a special use permit to use the house as six bedrooms, congregate living facility. If you They don't have any plans of doing any interior renovation to the property. On the outside, almost the entire lot in the back is paved. So they do plan to go ahead and stripe at least eight compliant parking spaces with drive aisle. But other than that, they have really no other plans for the exterior or interior. It's basically as it is.
All right.
I think that's it.
All right. And the building's already being used as a rental apartment building or?
My understanding is that it was being used as a single-family residence until this owner purchased it. I don't believe that it has ever been rented in the past.
All right. All right. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Everybody has the site plan to look at on their screens, right?
Yep. Chris?
Yes, a question for the applicant. I see on the, I guess it's called this first page, the overall site plan. You do show where garbage will be put on the back porch, I guess. The plan is not for some sort of a covered dumpster or roll off, correct? You're just going to have individual cans?
Currently, that's what the owner has set up. It's just individual cans. There is a covered back porch and that was his plan for trash storage.
Maybe as a follow-up to our focus in planning, are there specific rules for larger or congregate places? What they are, rule offs required or are cans sufficient? I actually don't have zoning things memorized.
There is no requirement for, for a dumpster. The planning commission is it wouldn't be inappropriate for the planning commission to ask for that if, if you think it's necessary on the site, but it's not required by the code.
All right. For the record, Kelly has arrived. All right. Any other questions? Concerns? Pretty straightforward. You've got enough parking. All right. If there's no other questions or comments. I'll make a motion that the applicant's proposal is a type two action under seeker and because it involves reuse of an existing residential building, which means no further environmental review is required. All right. Second by Paul, all in favor? All right. Six in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at five twenty-five at our January 2023 meeting. Second by Joe, all in favor? All right. Six in favor, zero opposed. All right.
January twenty.
We'll keep, we'll say Kelly abstained from those two, just because she arrived late, late on that. So we'll keep the six and one, one abstention. But all right. So we'll see you back in January.
January twenty-third is when it's going to be.
Oh, I'm not sure when the meeting is.
Did you just say that?
Oh, twenty twenty-three. Sorry, the, the year twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Hold on, Tito's going to find the actual date.
As of right now, it's on the tenth, but we're still finalizing the schedule for next year.
All right. Thank you. All right. That concludes seeker determinations. Under the next part of our meeting, which is public hearings and final deliberations. All right. In this portion of our meeting, we'll be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we were reviewing your information. So it would be very helpful if you could please give a brief overview of your project to remind us what you're planning. And then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, reviewed, we will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. To our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving the name and address of any members of the applicant's team that are planning to speak for our public record. And anyone from the community that will be speaking tonight in regards to a project, please also start off by stating your name and address for our records. For anyone unfamiliar with the format of a public hearing, we will be opening the microphone to solicit public comment about specific projects that are up for review. Public comments should be directed to the members of the planning commission and staff and not directed towards the applicant. It's not acceptable for any member of the public to enter into any form of discussion with the applicant directly during the meeting. The commission members will take note of any specific questions or comments that come up during the public comment portion of the meeting. And when there are no additional community members wishing to speak about the project, the public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and the applicant will be given a chance to respond. The commission members will ask the applicant to comment on any questions that were brought up by the community if they are relevant to our review. Again, it will not be acceptable for any member of the public to attempt to enter into a dialogue with the applicant while they respond to questions or comments that arose during the public hearing. So the time for us to hear from the public will be while the public hearing is open. Once, once it is closed, the public is here as an audience to the proceedings and any member of the public who cannot abide by these rules will be asked to leave. All right. Our first public hearing tonight is for the applicant United Group Pike Development Joint Venture. The project address is 183 Water Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a 10-story building with a 549-vehicle public parking garage and 120 upper-story dwelling units in the C2 Downtown Business District.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jacob Von Mecco. I'm with Wyndham Planning and Design. I'm here representing the Pike United Joint Venture. I live at 1611 East Shore Drive, Ithaca, New York. As was just stated, this is for the Water Street Garage redevelopment project, which is in partnership with the City of Binghamton. We're replacing the previous parking garage that existed on that site with a five-story parking garage with another five stories of residential units above that. This will be directly adjacent to the Boskov's building. And I have presented this to the board previously, so I'll keep it fairly brief. There will be about 500 parking spaces in the new structure and 120 residential units. It will be built out to the full limits of the sightline, filling the parcel. Previous structure actually went beyond the parcel boundaries with cantilever. We required a variance for both the lot coverage and the setback, which was granted by the BZA last week, as well as a height variance, which we don't think we will need, but we requested anyway, just in case the building structural components get finalized through design. We have an extra five feet of leeway on the building height. We also were at COD last week and received a certificate of appropriateness from them. And that, that brings us back to you. So I'll leave it there and open up for comments.
All right. Any questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right. All right. Well, let's do the public hearing and see if anyone's here to speak about the project. All right. So this is the public hearing for the applicant United Group Pike Development Joint Venture. Project address is 183 Water Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a 10-story building with a 549-vehicle public parking garage and 120 upper-story dwelling units in the C2 Downtown Business District. All right. If there's anyone who would like to speak about this project, please come to the microphone. All right. Seeing nobody will close the public hearing. All right. Seems like this is not controversial.
That's, that's what we've found so far.
All right. All right. Anyone have any last questions, comments, concerns?
Any spaces were in the original parking garage that was torn down?
I believe there were just over 500.
With 500 and 120 units, which means you'll need how many parking spaces for the units that you've got coming in?
So the, yeah, so the parking spaces will be publicly available, so we're not going to reserve them specifically for the tenants. But there will be a parking pass basically that's available to the tenants that would give them for the duration of their lease, access to the public parking garage spaces. But generally speaking, all of the parking spaces will be publicly available with the expectation that the upper stories will most likely be used by the residents and the lower stories, which tend to serve more of the downtown business district will be more attractive to the public.
All right.
Nick, I just want to point out, this is a procedural thing. We had a public hearing at the last meeting and that was closed. And the board issued a negative declaration under seeker. And so now we're just voting on, on the site plan.
My bad. All right. So we've already done seeker. So then I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met. All right. Second by Chris, all in favor? All right. That's seven in favor, zero opposed. All right. Good luck.
Very much.
When does construction start?
I, I don't know that a specific time has been set in stone yet.
All right. Is there lots of funding that has to be secured now or?
It's, yes, I mean, is the short answer, but yeah, there, there's some logistics that need to be worked out before full construction begins.
All right. All right. Good luck. Thank you. All right. Our next public hearing tonight is for the applicant Chabad House. The project address is 26 to 34 Wall Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of the ground floor of an existing office building into a place of worship in the C2 Downtown Business District. Hello, welcome back.
Hi. So I, we, we met, I was here last month and the only thing that has changed is we made the necessary changes to the parking, which we, which was discussed. We also added a spot for bikes, which was recommended as well. And we're here for the public hearing.
All right. I did just one question before we start. On the first plan, I saw there was a pretty nice screen space that you talked about.
That's still there, I believe.
Okay. So it's still planned that you would.
Yes.
You'd have that there.
You mean, you're talking about in front of the main entrance, right?
Yeah, it was kind of off to the side or?
Right. Yeah. So we still having, we're still, we don't have the specifics yet of what that's going to look like, but the idea is basically to have outdoor seating option for, you know, the, the few months a year that it's nice outside.
Okay.
And so people can sit outside and study, do work, hang out. But that's the idea and to create that kind of vibe at the entrance.
Okay. All right. All right. Any questions before we open a public hearing? All right. So we'll open the public hearing. So this is the public hearing for the applicant Chabad House and project address is 26 to 34 Wall Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of the ground floor of an existing office building into a place of worship in the C2 Downtown Business District. If there's anyone here who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. All right. I'm seeing nobody's coming to the microphone. We'll close the public hearing. So also does not seem to be controversial. All right. So we just got comments from the county today. I think some, some of us haven't read yet.
Nick, if I could just point out, those comments reference a variance that the applicant did not end up actually needing. So anything pertaining to a variance can be disregarded. The only things that I saw in there that apply to the site plan are, they suggest that curbs should be repaired and closed off wherever a curb cut is, is being eliminated on the site plan. And that landscaping should be added if possible.
All right.
I don't know if this is relevant, but we plan on redoing the whole facade. For anyone who's familiar with that building, it, it looks like a warehouse right now, or you know, maybe an office building, but we do plan on, you know, changing it just to look a little bit more warmer and more for the vibe of a community center. You know, so that's, that, that is in the plans. We don't have that down to the details yet, but that is in the workings.
Okay.
You were going to say something. I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask, are you opposed to when you, so there's some curb cuts that are going to be removed when the parking lot gets reconfigured or relayed out. There's some curb cuts, driveway openings that aren't needed anymore. Are you opposed to doing the work to fill those in? Just redo the curb and the sidewalk to?
No, not in principle. I would, I would be interested to see what specifically they're recommending and you may notice that the, the layout for the parking spaces is very different than it currently is. Anyway, it just goes a whole different way. So in all likelihood, we're going to have to anyway make changes to the access point. Also, it's, right now it's an open parking lot. Like, let's be honest, random people park there at night. There's no accountability. So we're probably going to put something up to keep it more intact anyhow.
Okay.
But no, not in principle. I would be interested to see what specifically they're recommending, but.
Okay.
How many curb cuts are being eliminated? That would have to be.
There are, I want to say there are two on Henry Street that are being eliminated. And then the one on Center Street is being reduced from basically the, the width of the parking lot to a 24-foot apron. So basically what the county is saying is that the changes that were made to the site plan should be, should be built out structurally. So, so where your architect drew new curb and sidewalk where there used to be ramps, that should be, that, that should be filled in with a sidewalk and curb.
Okay. Sounds good.
So if we just made it a conditional approval that the ultimately the site work that's done on the property is going to look like the site plan that was submitted, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Is everyone else okay with that? Making that conditional approval. All right. Any other questions, concerns, comments? All right. All right. So this, this project was a type two action under seeker because it was the, involved the reuse of an existing building. So no further environmental review was required. And we completed the public hearing. So I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met contingent on the the understanding that the site work that happens in the parking lot area of the project matches what's on the submitted site plan that was labeled eight, 100 proposed site plan that was submitted as part of the package. All right. All right. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right. That's seven in favor, zero opposed. All right. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next public hearing tonight is for the applicant Stonebridge Campus Living. Project address is 221 Washington Street. This is a site plan modification to add basement, social slash assembly space to multi-unit dwelling with 12 existing units and 45 total bedrooms in the C2 Downtown Business District.
Good evening.
All right. State your name and addresses for our record.
Hi, Martin Miranda from Tour Barone in Albany, New York, 313 Hamilton Street.
All right.
Alyssa Post, 221 Washington Street, Binghamton, New York.
All right.
Do you guys all have the plan we sent to Tito? The new digital copy with measurements and all that?
Yes. Is the basement layout?
Yes, the new, like with all the new structures and everything.
Yes. Had some pool tables on it?
But the study room and the build out and camera.
Yes.
We wanted to incorporate all the feedback from the last hearing and we've consulted with our own designers to provide some plans that we think address is all of the concerns that were raised at the last hearing. We've provided some renderings to give a visual of what the space will now look like upon approval as well as a diagram of an overview of what the space will look like as well as identifying approximately eight cameras in the basement to provide the commission an understanding of what the vantage point of those cameras will consist of. And of course, if there's any additional comments or information that the commission needs, we'd be happy to provide that or answer any questions there.
All right. All right. Tito, do you remember we left the public hearing open for this, right? Knowing that we were going to get these new drawings.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Yeah. All right. Well, anybody have any questions or comments before we let people continue the public hearing holdover? All right. I guess the one question, so the the walls that are shown now, they're fixed in place. There's no moving them. There's not, they're not temporary partitions or anything. They're floor to ceiling walls. Okay.
My understanding is there is a wall here. Yes. So that's correct.
All right. All right. And it looks like you're showing, so you've got a workout room and then a couple of study cubicles maybe. And then a relatively larger open space, but certainly not as large as the entire building before. And then another partition and another open space that's broken up by what looks like maybe a little what looks like maybe a little living room, TV room. Okay. And laundry room and basement bathrooms. All right. All right. Well, let's do this. Let's, uh, let people who are here to speak about the project do it in the public hearing and then we'll, we'll reconvene. All right. So this is the continuation of the public hearing for the applicant Stonebridge Campus Living. Project address is 221 Washington Street. Uh, this is a site plan modification to add basement, social slash assembly space to multi-unit dwelling with 12 existing units and 45 total bedrooms in the C2 Downtown Business District. Uh, if anybody would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. Hello?
My name is Joshua Levy. I reside at 221 Washington Street.
All right.
Good evening, men. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Council, and members of the planning board and the public at large who is here today reviewing from home. I'm here today to speak on the behalf of the tenants at 221 Washington Street. I want to start off by sincerely apologizing for our absence at the previous public hearings as we were unaware and unsure of specific procedures. I stand before you today to ask you to approve the application that would allow the tenants of the building to use the amenities that we should be receiving and how this situation has been detrimental to us, most notably financially. Similar to many college students, we, the tenants of 221 Washington are no stranger to tight financial situations. Half of the residents have currently have part-time jobs to finance their rent, tuition, and day-to-day activities. We currently pay $825 per month plus utilities to live at 221. In the individual lease contracts that we have signed with Stonebridge Campus Living, the contract includes an amenity space that is supposed to have a full access laundry room, fully equipped gym, study rooms, and a relaxing hangout space. Since we understand in our contracts that rent reduction is not the liability of Stonebridge Campus Living, I would like to discuss the financial and time-consuming struggles we, the tenants, have faced due to this basement being condemned for the entirety of the first semester, half of our lease. As a student with an inconvenient class schedule, I am only able to do my laundry at night. Due to the condemnation, laundry rooms are only open during office hours. I've had to resort to bringing my laundry to a laundry, to a laundromat, which has been a great inconvenience regarding time and finances. Many tenants in the building have also had to do this over the course of our stay and have lost a decent amount of money and time doing it. The condemned basement also bars us from accessing the gym, leaving most of us with having to resort to a membership-based gym that we pay monthly, which hurts, which also hurts us financially. Another burden expense on the long list of expenses to the tenant that many of us struggle to afford. The lack of study rooms requires the tenants to drive 15 minutes back and forth from campus in order to study for their classes. If we were to say, give an arbitrary number to what portion of our rent goes towards this amenity space, given similar apartment rates and square footage and currently functional amenity spaces in the area, let's say $100, for example, you'd find that the tenants of 221 Washington Street have paid over $30,000 combined, more than what we have been receiving due to the condemnation of this basement. And that does not include the aforementioned expenses we incurred replacing the amenities that we have failed to receive. We understand and respect due process of the board, but I plead with all of you to sympathize with financially struggling students. I'd now like to address the concerns given at the previous public hearings from the owners of the shop and residents nearby. Uh, the owners of the shop, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, said something along the lines with people soliciting outside of their restaurant. Uh, I'd like to say that we, the tenants of 221 have absolutely no involvement in any of the concerns they or the neighbors have previously stated to the board. These incidents occurred prior to the current tenants inhabiting 221 Washington Street. And I'd also like to address the concerns in two parts. First, the concern about the building over the past few years under previous ownership and previous tenants. The previous regime of owner and tenants, I'll be honest, were not the best neighbors. I can assure you that the people living there now have no connection to any previous tenants under former ownership and the majority of the current tenants did not even live at the building when the basement got condemned. To address the problems the shop owners and neighbors have faced more recently, there are multiple buildings down the street that have massive foot traffic of tenants and college students that come down Washington Street daily to get there and back. Whatever they may be doing down there is none of our business, but we can assure that none of these instances have, that affected the shop and the neighbors have any connection to the current tenants of 221 Washington Street. Believe me, we also do not appreciate the commotion caused by these other residences. We'd like to be transparent going forward with our neighbors and have open communication to address any further issues. With these new floor plans, we hope to show our neighbors, the members of the board, and the community that we are not a harm to the city of Binghamton, but rather an asset as we have given business to many local restaurants and businesses in the area. In fact, I think I saw at least eight of our tenants eating at the shop, eating crepes and hamburgers the other day. We hope that with these floor plans and the sentiment I give to you today will help lift the financial burden clouding over us and bring some clarity and prosperity to Washington Street. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak about the project?
My name is Zorn. I own the shop and the building next door. I appreciate the young man's comments and I'm actually glad that somebody actually showed up to comment and talk about it. Just, just to be straightforward, we, we do not have a, a problem with student housing whatsoever. I, I have students livings up upstairs. They're they're also, uh, most of them are, are employees as well. We house them, we feed them, we give them employment, we, we write their recommendation letters for grad schools or potential employment after the fact. The reason we're here today is, uh, is the what the space in the basement was previously used for. So after doing a little bit of research, apparently this thing has a name. It's called the pit. And, uh, maybe part of the financial struggle is coming from not being able to operate this club. But it's just something that has its place elsewhere perhaps, but maybe not on that stretch of Washington Street because it definitely disrupts the the way of life and, and pretty much the quality of life for, for the residents of the building and, uh, and so on. And, uh, it's just, I have so much adrenaline right now. Is it possible for me to see that plan and what's being proposed for the future?
Yep, Tony, Tito can give you a copy.
Got it. Thank you. And all due respect, I mean, the, the gentleman that, that just spoke and I, I, I know they were not supposed to speak directly to the opposing party, but like he will be gone next semester. And the most likely, uh, the stone bridge is going to be gone in two years. Looking at the track record, this building has been sold every, if not every three, but maybe between two and three years has been a new owner. So what we're doing here is I'm trying to prevent this from happening in the future so we can just have a little bit of peace at night. Uh, there's other clubs that, that can be visited. There's, uh, maybe different venues that can be used for, uh, these purposes. This looks like a, a good party space, if you will. So with couches and, uh, you know, there's a gym. Also, I, I like to point out that there's a laundry in the building upstairs in the apartments because I, I walked through this building. I know how it was built. I was there before it was even walls. I've seen the plan, I've walked through it and I understand what it is. So, but I'm sure if there's some kind of inconvenience, I apologize. It's just that uh, we're looking into the future, past next six months. And, uh, another thing I wanted to point out is, is it's in one of our reports that we've submitted that you know, we, we talked to a lot of people and some realtors and apparently the stone bridge is maybe it's hearsay, but they're pursuing this group called the Apes, uh, to come back and occupy the building. Come next, uh, next fall and this is not the best group of boys. So, um, I'm gonna leave it at that. And, um, again, hard no for the social assembly space, please.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else who'd like to? Yep.
How's it going, everybody? Uh, my name is Jacob Skolnick. I'm also a tenant at 221 Washington. Uh, first of all, respect all restaurants, everything, the shop, it's a great spot. First of all, there are no laundry machines upstairs. Just, I live there. I walk down five flights of stairs to do my laundry. Uh, and then secondly, I'm a senior student. Uh, I've been living there, uh, for the last, for the last semester. And I'm not a part of any partying, social thing. The basement has been condemned my entire time there. I'm gonna be leaving, graduating this semester or next semester. I'm just someone like, I want a, a spot to study. That was kind of what I thought I was getting into was a spa with a basement to study, to hang out. Uh, I'm pretty relaxed, like low-key. I mean, going back and forth, the laundry, all this stuff, it's all kind of just like inconveniences. And at the end of the day, it's not like changing my life or, you know, for the worse, not the end of the world. Uh, but obviously, you know, for the students of Binghamton, I think that it could be a really nice space. I don't know who's living there next year or when. I, I came with a couple of friends and thought it was a nice spot to live. Uh, but obviously, I mean, I think the, the, the building has the potential to be a really nice building like Holly or something like that. And I think that developing the space into a nice lounge area, um, you know, really just makes the property better for students, for everyone living there. And yeah, I mean, I think that I don't see a downside to it. Obviously, if there's dangerous things going on, I mean, college kids will find a spot to do dangerous things anywhere, you know? I don't know. But for me personally, I mean, I hope you guys can I don't know, see where I'm coming from as a student that was promised spot. I'm kind of paying, like we're paying a premium at the, at the place for like a nice student housing area. I think it has the potential to be a really nice student housing area. So, um, yeah, thank you guys.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? You're definitely gonna have to take off the Mets hat though. No way. All right. Now we'll listen for sure.
My name is Ben. I live with Jake. Oh, we just came. Cause last time we heard that you guys, the board, wanted us some of the tenants to come. So we heard that and we thought we'd come. I didn't know that this thing all planned out already. Cause like he lives underneath me, me and Jake live up on fourth floor. Um, I just wanted to really address, cause Jake kind of brought up more about just like the house and everything, more about like the commotions and everything. Like we live on Washington Street. The bars are maybe a 30-second walk from there. There's grown college kids walking up and down. We're dealing with the same promotions and all that stuff. I live on the fourth floor. I have two windows in my bedroom. I'm a current grad student here and I'm studying for the CPA. So obviously on some Thursday and Friday nights when I'm not necessarily going out, so I'm trying to spend time to study for the CPA, I'm hearing all the same yelling, all the same screaming, all the same noises that all the other residents are hearing as well. And obviously having a nice little basement space to go down to, it's just like, you know, study and have a spot where it won't be as loud would be nice to have. Cause on the street of Washington, the basement is actually, you know, underneath and it's more on the level with the, uh, the parking lot that's behind at Doubletree. So obviously a lot of that noise wouldn't really reach that basement area, which again would be like a nice hangout area for us also just cause as of now, like if we want to go hang out somewhere, we have to like go leave and either go to campus to study. We don't really have like a space for like us to hang out in Congress. We have like tenants and like just like socially hang out. Cause you know, all those college students, they have a lot of stress and pressure that we go through every day. And I hope, yeah, it's kind of all I really have to say.
All right. Thank you. Uh, hold on one second. Brian, what's the, uh, policy on letting people who have already spoken, speak again? What if they've spoken already tonight? But may have heard something that they'd like to respeak about? Is anybody opposed to hearing a follow-up? All right. Come on.
I apologize for this second visit. I know that we're not really allowed to respond to other, um, statements made at the public hearing, but just, uh, just I heard one. The owner of the shop, yeah, referencing this building as the pit. Um, I can say as a person who is a college student, who knows what's going on in Binghamton, that is wholeheartedly and unequivocally untrue. The, the pit, what he's referring to is actually located on 81 State Street, which has not been occupied by any current tenant that's living in 221 Washington Street. So I feel that that name that he's trying to assign to this building is slanderous and unfair.
All right.
Um, also that yes, there are no laundry machines above the basement. They are definitely all in the basement. You know, we can easily prove that. And, uh, you know, I mean, you, at the end of the day, we just want to be able to have access to the amenities that we are paying for. If this is, you know, we can go back and forth on the potential of this space or the potential of that space. But at the end of the day, we're just college students trying to get by, struggling to get by financially and are just doing our very, very best to get the best grades possible and enjoy our time while we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Yeah.
Hi again. You're Janie Zinda, uh, 219 Washington Street. We've submitted a multiple public comments. Um, and I just wanted to take this last opportunity to ask you to deny it. Um, and then if it's at all possible to come up with some sort of way to make sure that future, uh, owners of this property are not able to provide this space as a, a, a public space for the tenant. Nothing.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right. Seeing nobody else coming to the microphone, we will close the public hearing. You guys want to come back up? All right. You can respond in any way you want to any of the comments that were made.
Uh, certainly. Um, I was not aware that any of the tenants were going to be present today, offering, uh, comments at the public hearing. So I'm puzzling surprised to see that they've taken time out of their busy schedule to show that this, uh, matter is very important to them. I also think it's been helpful, those comments to dispel any of the, um, information from opponents of this project and, uh, really to try to And uh, really to to try to, but this uh. Project is trying to do is move past any of this uh, past history about this and really transform this space to something that. Is going to be productive and positive for the future, regardless of who's living there. Um, in the short term and in the long term. And so we think that by transforming. The current space, which was fairly open and contained um. A stage, a bar, a DJ se- section, um. Looked like it was ready for a party. Uh, now with the partitions, the student, the study rooms, the cameras. We really have uh. Provided, I think, uh, promising plan. To that is consistent with the neighborhood. That will um, I think that's someone mentioned, tried to prevent um. Any issues from ever happening again, we we think that this accomplishes that, and if there's any additional information. About the plan specifically, I'd be happy to answer those questions for you.
Alright. Alright, does anybody have any? Questions? Comments? Further concerns? Chris?
Yeah. Not that there's anything new, um. So I'm not gonna belabor these points, but just some of the points were brought up in previous. Um. Planning commission meetings, um. I still have concerns that the chief of police has expressed. Opposition to this plan. I I have concerns that even with some of the additions on the revised. Site plan and floor plan, there's still large open spaces. Which could be used for a party room if tables and couches are moved. Um. There's still significant opposition from some of the neighbors. Um, all those are still concerns that I have.
Alright.
I was, can I just answer, I was under the impression last time that the chief of police letter was not to be taken into account for this vote. We were told that last time by council. Because he refuses like speaks, he let us know that we could just keep it at. He was not that.
I think the instruction was that there shouldn't be a negative inference.
There shouldn't be a negative inference drawn from his comments. Uh. He's just making factual statements about what other spaces like this have been used for in the past. And his stating his concern, which I believe the member already expressed. Probably had the exact same concerns when they looked at the site plan. So.
Alright. Mario, did you have a? Oh, okay, yep. Um. Alright, uh, Brian, I think we've probably gone over this several times in the past, but have we ever done any kind of conditional approval that's uh. Relies on the applicant not getting cited. By the police. In the next like two years, and if they do, their site plan is. Approval is retracted, or is that something that we have the authority to do?
That's a question I wish you'd asked like two days ago, cause I've done some research, I, off the top of my head, I would have a hard time believing that you can do that.
Okay. Is there any?
I believe that what you're supposed to do is look for modification to the site plan itself. That will limit the use of the space. To that, something that is not objectionable, that doesn't have a negative impact, impact on the neighborhood. Or a negative impact on its neighbors.
Alright, so I'll just speak candidly, so I. From everything that we've heard from the the tenants and from the applicant. I feel pretty comfortable that they're not planning to do anything that's gonna keep promoting these uh. The problems that they've been having. But as somebody has pointed out. They potentially are not gonna own this building forever. And who knows what the next person who owns it is gonna do? And so if there was something that we could do that was. Uh, I guess it's based on. React, reactions or. Actions from the police department in the future, or any, if there's anything like that, that we have any ability to do.
There are existing codes that would be applicable if there was a future violations that we could apply. Just either lockdowns or nuisance proceedings or those types of things. They'll take time. But I always advise the planning commission, you should review these plans as like you're looking to owners from now and ten years or twenty years from now.
Yeah.
Because the issue is. Not who are the current tenants, not who were current owners, but is this a good plan on its standing on its own? And I, and listen, some people will also propose. And I always sort of cringed at them, like operational controls for these types of issues. And they're proposing an operational control here, the cameras. Ten years from now, are those maintained, are they broken, are they spray painted, are they shot with BB guns? I've seen all those things happen to cameras and those types of devices. So it's a step and it's a measure. But you sort of have to take it into consideration for what what it is.
Alright. So let's say just hypothetically. Let's say we we gave an approval today. And then uh, six months from now. There was another. Complaint, the police show up, there, there's an actual violation of some sort. Is that, is that reflective on the site plan in any way, or there's really nothing that could be done?
Well, we wouldn't be able to cite them for not having a site plan, that's for sure. So they would have to be, they would have to be investigated to see whether they complied with site plan. Before they get, were allowed to occupy the space. Then we'd have to look to see whether it was being operated as an illegal establishment, like, you know, I. The pit, I'm familiar with that at eighty-one State Street, I'm familiar with the, with the group that ran it. We we were able to successful in getting them to move out of there. But. It took time.
Yeah. Is there anything that doesn't take time, like I? Can appreciate the neighbor's concerns if there's something happens and they'd like to. Immediately get this taken care of, it takes time to shut things down in the future and.
It does. It's law enforcement and there's legal actions and there's will be criminal charges and all those things take time.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, any other uh? Questions or concerns or?
I I, so sorry, so loud, um, if the pit has been, say dismantled, do we know where they relocated, because that's probably the next question. You know, is it possible that this is? You know, this is something I unfortunately. I just heard the word congregate a lot.
I I can't speak authoritatively, my recollection was that establishment was or. Location may have been an apes location as well.
Okay.
That is, but I am. Can. That's going off reports I read over a year ago, so I can't remember exactly what details, but I'm confusing with the different case. Um, but.
And I have a second question.
It is. To my knowledge, it is not, there are some other places that we're looking at, but I'm not certain if it has popped up after.
Is there a way to modify this plan to allow for the gym space and some of these small segregated study spaces and laundry? And um, section them off into the big place that would be more for. The congregating, so you would have some small, very small study spaces for people to go in individually. And to do their laundry and to have the gym space without a larger space that could be used for what we're potentially trying to avoid.
How many units are in the building?
Yeah, how many? How many units are in the building?
Twelve.
Well.
So how many bedrooms?
Forty-five. So the first floor is a retail tenant, that obviously brings in extra financials as a separate from our residence, um. It's not that we can't, but we're trying not to jack up the run even more if we're paying them an amenity fee, if you look at something like Holly Street or Shenango Place. They have an amenity space. For the residents to not taking a retail tenant away, so kinda hard to pull a retail tenant, um. When that's a separate being from our residents upstairs.
Alright. The reason I asked my question, uh. Chairman, is because the three study rooms that are shown. Those look like exactly what I think you want to encourage and what the residents want.
Correct.
Yep.
But three to forty-five seems like an odd ratio. Or or low ratio.
Uh, hold on one second, Chris, Kelly did ask. Basically what Brian was also saying, is it possible to carve up the that open space even more?
Um, we didn't want it to look like a cubicle office space, because obviously that's not really enticing for future, right, so if I'm renting to. Three girls up. At all different tenants, they should be able to go down there and and watch, you know, TV. Like they will. Add some to that wall that you see right there where the pool tables are, we could add another three to that wall. You know. Like, I've gone down there for all the rest, unfortunately. I think it's too too crowded.
It 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 seems to me like the space nearest to the living room and for the restrooms. Seems like a space that could use. Some of those study rooms and that different set.
So that door. Comes to the side, you see that door?
Yep.
Or just have to make that door stays able to be walked through.
It just strikes me that if the wall that you're showing in the middle shifted towards the pool tables, you could fit another row of. Study rooms in that.
Sure, on the opposite side.
Up towards the living room.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, for the applicant, I mean, given I think there's. Multiple questions about the congregate.
Hmm.
Assembly space, that's as you can stick.
Right.
While it may not be appealing to you folks as the applicant, if you carved this up and honeycombed it into maybe not forty-five, but into. Ten or twelve.
Hmm.
Um. Study rooms that are all partitioned off with full walls and everything like that. Yes, it may be less appealing to those who want a cubicle farm or don't want a cubicle farm. But I think it may address some of these overarching concerns about. Even it's not you and your current tenants, the folks five years from now who are turning this back into an out of control, you know, Delta House room, animal house.
Yeah, I think we're really focusing, you know, when I walked properties like U Club and Holly Street and Shenango Place. Something like that has multiple beds, multiple dwellings, and and they're not having ten, twelve, fifteen cubicles, they have. Spread out with couches and nice inventing machines and these these amenities for the residents to use, um, and I think. Higher out, and that's what's really like holding everybody up, which is understandable, but I think that if. We just have an amenity space and we go forward and these are individual leases, these are individual people. And we're not running to a whole group like the Apes that already has this bad name, this can be just. People hang out, three people, four people, they go back upstairs. You know, it doesn't have to be something, and I think with us. And I'm cause we have three maintenance staff members. Three staff members in the office on site, I think that we can. Monitor the. Very, very.
Alright. Well, it sounds like there's a a question back to you then, um. Do you want to take another look at? Reducing the amount of wide open space and submit a different plan? Or do you wanna go forward with it as it is, and? It looks like we're probably gonna gonna do a vote if you wanna proceed with this plan as is.
I think that we'd like a vote, is there any way to um? Do a vote with specification, so we approve this if there's two added study rooms to that wall that, you know, he had mentioned. Instead of pushing this a whole month, cause then the contractors, the designers, the architects, it's it's really.
Yeah.
Holding us up every month we do that, so.
We can do contingent approvals if uh, if you'd like to go that route. Um. If any, but somebody has to specify what the contingent approval would be, so.
Right.
But, Joe.
Um, you were, um, you're going down the path I was thinking about. I asked the question. Um, is it at all possible to get the fire marshal or someone to take a look at this before? Um, we go farther, my own view of this is. I would not, I would abstain from voting on this project until it got input. At least a cursory look from someone else, because I am concerned about the level of safety. Sprinklers, alarms, which is way more detailed than we get involved with the planning. But if it would be unfair to your group to say. We approve it, it goes there and they come back, you need to spend a half a million dollars on fire improvements, it's not. You know, and that, because. And the only reason I put this up is we've been through this once.
So I will speak to that, we could send you the reports, we actually just worked with Petkowsky, they just did our annual five and ten year. Um, we had it submitted all to our insurance, we have full sprinkler systems down there, full smoke alarms, carbon dioxide, two fire exits. Um, it's not having to walk up the stairs, you can walk right to the road out the back door that you see off the gym. Um, so I can assure you it's completely fire safe. Um, I did speak to the fire marshal about the occupancy limit, and he said unfortunately, we had to get some type of site plan, something in our hand. To in order for him to come and tell us an occupancy limit uh, in the space. Um, I can send, I did not, I sent the the report, but I could send that over, um.
As part of, as part of applying for the building permit, it will have to undergo a code review.
Correct.
To see whether it meets the standard, the fire and the state building codes.
But we were told we had to do it after.
And then usually they will come and look at the plan and they'll go inspect the space before permitted. And after it's built, obviously too.
Alright.
As far as this particular plan goes. I can't speak to who the owner is gonna be five years from now anymore than I can ask the applicant to speak for the owner, that was five years ago. I think they've been very forthcoming, I think they've put together a solid plan, I have no problem going forward with it.
Alright. Alright. Anybody else? Um, there's a, seems like there's a couple of people that are in. Um. Sounding like they might be. Okay with the plan if it were to have some extra partitions, anybody wanna? Talk about what? That might look like?
I'll be candid, I'm. A no pending, I actually see it, so I'm not gonna be a yes. With a possible comeback later, no, I I wa- I would wanna see another plan in January. So if there's a vote tonight, I'm a no, based on what I'm seeing.
Alright.
I'm terrible at this mic, are you, would you? With a contingency on more rooms today, be a yes, or you still wanna see a full new plan? Okay.
How's everybody else feeling?
I I feel the same way, just because contingency could mean a lot of different things and.
Like to see it. Okay? Mario, any thoughts or? Okay.
It was the votes, I like, I don't know, like any, yes, it's sometimes.
What they're doing is taking a straw pole and wanting themselves to see where they, where they're feeling out where the votes are, and right now it seems as though at least. Two members are unwilling to vote unless they see a plan, one member is willing to vote on the plan as it is. And the other kind of undecided, so they're all, yeah, seeing where where it falls out.
And we can appreciate that, like I said, it's just this has been months and months in the making, this has been since March, so it is now December, so we have done. I. Runners in five years were not just two. Where the endpoint is, unfortunately. Making this.
Alright.
Before I turn the commission board.
I I think, and I I'm not a member of the vote board, I don't spoke before, so I think they understand that. We've just had a number of cases that were. Fairly bad, and so they're. Rightfully cautious about how they wanna proceed, um. If 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 you're, well. I guess if the majority of the board is, wants to see a plan. Right now it's only two people, but that's what they wanna see, I'd I would suggest that we tell the applicant exactly what they're looking for, so they have no idea what they're, so it doesn't come back next month if we get the same situation.
Uh, that's correct, and I would just uh. Make a point that we've tried to uh, address all the points I've been raised at prior meetings, and so, and we'll continue to try to address those points, um, but at some point, uh. We do need to. Uh, come to a, reach a endpoint and.
Yeah.
Have a decision.
That was kind of my point, this is their first time back here, and they've done everything we've asked them from up to this point. I have no reason to believe that they're not gonna follow the rule of what they said.
And I do wanna just mention too, like, I know that we brought up the police chief and law enforcement, my entire family's in law enforcement, I'm very aware of the situation. Um, I would never do anything to hinder that with someplace that I work, and I know I can't stand at the door right on a Saturday night or Friday night. Um, but I can promise you that I am very aware of the situation and I respect law enforcement, and I would never put them in a situation where they have to be at one of my buildings. Continuously and overuse emergent. Put them in a situation where they have to be at one of my buildings continuously and overuse emergency services where they need to be used other. Other places for sure.
Got you. Well, I think where we're at is it looks like unless we, so we could do a vote right now on the plan that we have. But it's looking like there's uh at least a few people that will. They don't feel comfortable without having the actual plan in front of them of what you're you're going to do. Uh, to vote yes, so potentially you've got a few no's definite. So I'll put it back to you, what you'd like to do. You can, we could table it again. You could revise again. Based on this. Uh, understanding that it's still just too much open space the way it is. Uh, and then we could look at it again in January.
So like we kind of said, if no, if is anyone gonna like tell us exactly what to, you know what I mean? I don't know.
We could talk further.
I could tell you what I would be comfortable voting yes on. I want it honeycomb. I don't want any potential of a party space. I don't, and I know that may defeat what you're looking for in this special use permit, but my attitude is underground. Open congregate spaces, I'm an automatic no. Well, I'm an automatic no, but I'm a no. So if you want to break this up into ten, twelve, I'm just sort of eyeballing this. Uh, study cubicles that could help the residents do their studying, prepare for their CPA exams. That's something I could I could stomach, but again, that may defeat the point of what you're looking for of a congregate space for watching TV and playing pool.
Right. And like I said, we're just really trying to do these other places that are very similar. Shangal Place, Holly Street that are just downtown. They have these amenities spaces. They have places that they can gather. I mean, I think if we honeycombed it, I don't even think it would be appealing to a group of three girls if I show them the the place. That we're leasing um. Yeah, yes, but I mean, we're still able to walk to the street. So yes, I can understand what you're saying, like no windows. Um, but this would be. A totally different situation if you gave us the opportunity and then you guys could all come check it out.
Okay, I'll just add that we're we're working within the constraints of the building. The the first floor doesn't provide this much square footage to to accommodate these types of amenities and. Um, based on my conversations with. The owners, uh, they've been trying to find the right balance between something that is productive. In the way of a study uh area and workout area. And also a rec room because it's important for the tenants to also partake in social um activities. And uh, there's always a threat for those social activities to uh lead into something else, but we think we've properly addressed that with. Uh, multiple cameras in multiple locations uh to monitor to make sure that those activities are are appropriate.
Alright. Um. Joe, yeah.
Question on the drawing, if you would um. Like a title block saying this is revision one or revision two and actually. Pointing on the date of it. Because right now it doesn't even have the address of the building um this piece of paper. So there's really no tie to this to when it was produced, how it was produced. Just at least you can have that piece on here.
I could always email the invoice over from the from the person that sketched it and the date.
Okay, the other issue that I know there's been many mentions of the cameras and I think I've identified where they are in here, but what is the symbol that's being used for cameras on this on this?
It's like a little circle in the in the corner, circle with like a big circle and a little circle.
Okay.
Do you see them kinda?
By the front door, by the bathroom door.
Yes. In that, you know, couch area, gym.
Think there's two in the center area, one in the gym.
There's eight total down in that area.
Starting from the bottom, you have one by the laundry room and one by the bathroom. As you move up towards the paper, there's a camera in this. Uh, TV room where the couches are. Just outside of that room, there's two cameras. Uh, just on the other side of that wall, as you can go uh north of paper, there's an additional additional camera. Just outside the study room, there's an additional camera to provide two angles of that uh common space. And finally, there's one camera in in the uh fitness area. I think I have eight in total. On this, on these plans.
And then there was is one in the lobby as well, so you can, we can monitor the front door who comes in and out.
Alright, so we kind of. Got Chris's view on what a revised plan would be, which. Um. That's his. Sure, is anybody else willing to express what they'd be willing to uh consider if they saw a revised plan of?
Sure, if I saw a revised plan with maybe three more study spaces, one or two more TV viewing spaces that were partitioned off. I think I'd be more comfortable.
Okay.
I'd agree with that.
Alright. Mario, you're good. Do you want to weigh in at all on what the revised? Okay. Okay. Alright, so it's back to you again. So you've kind of heard what you'd they'd like to see revised plan showing. You could push it to January with. A revised plan, or you could ask for it to go to vote tonight. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. The TV additional two rooms about the size of the TV room.
For the location of those additional. Rooms.
If there's space, I mean uh that large wall in the middle. Is that currently there? Would you be able to put at least one on that end and then another? Above it? So uh two TV rooms on the the bottom halves of the floor plan and then. One uh where a current uh pool table would be.
Yeah, so if you look at the plan where there's only like fourteen feet between that wall and the door opening, so if you like took those study rooms that are almost. Ten feet by eight, you're making that walk space like. Really about three and a half feet, and then if you do it on the other side, like there's not. Much space, it would be essentially what you said, like a honeycomb down there with the with the room.
Three, there are there's space for three additional study rooms and there may be space for two additional TV room. But there's for three study rooms and. Perhaps. If the concern is this uh space in the middle that it's creating too much of an open space. Perhaps that could be, that space could be used for either three study rooms or two TV rooms. But just so that it addresses that uh metal section that I think is uh.
Just, just so I understand, the the gray wall that's shown in the center of that room, that is an existing wall that's already there? Okay. I guess my question is, can you put three of those study spaces on to the where the pool of tables are?
That's what I was thinking.
And could you, yes, and could you reorient? Two TV rooms against the other side of that wall rather than having it face towards the front, towards the laundry room? So that your hallway comes down the side of the building across to the bathrooms?
So when you're like this side.
Then you'd have another hallway coming down from your support beam down to the other side of your bathrooms as well, around the two TV rooms in the center.
Would you still have access to that maintenance door right there?
Yes.
I think.
It's a kind of a rush sketch. But I showed you three rooms here on this side of the wall and two TV rooms here. Facing that direction if you wanted to, so that your hallway comes down, comes over to the bathrooms, come down, go to the bathroom. I I don't want to design your project for you, but that's the only way I can see you can design those spaces into that space. Mister Chairman, I guess what they're asking you, is there someone that wants to make a vote for a straight up approval?
Yeah, I guess it's like a little confusing because like we're all throwing out ideas for like what we're actually voting.
Yeah, well, I guess to clarify.
Hard to make a decision without like ownership or anybody involved or the contractor or.
Oh, I got you on your end.
To say add all the stuff when I don't know pricing or any, you know, anything.
Well, do you want to? Wait until January?
The concern that's been. Raised is the current location for the TV room may or may not be weight bearing. Supporting walls. And those walls currently exist. And. We would just ask if there is a conditional approval today that um. We have an opportunity to consult with our contractors. To ensure that it's logistically possible to accomplish those plans. And if we need to make additional plans because of safety concerns. That we have an opportunity to provide. New plans at the next hearing that may deviate from what is being voted on today on on a conditional approval.
Sure. What if, so if the conditional approval is that you modify the plan to include three additional. Study cubicle rooms that are roughly the size of the ones that you've shown on the plan. As well as two additional rooms that are the size of the TV room. So the TV room plus two additional rooms. If you could figure out a way to make that all fit into the basement. I don't think there's any way to leave these wide open enormous areas where a huge party could happen.
Mister Chairman, I just want to clarify, are you? Are you saying three TV rooms or two T rooms?
Drew it up, it was two.
Two, alright.
It sounds like two is the best we're gonna get.
Alright, two, we're down to two. Good negotiating, so two. TV rooms and three cubicles, so that. Alright, so that would be the conditional approval and then. I guess we would. If you can fit that uh that amount of space in there, I guess, do we necessarily care exactly what it looks like or as long as they've met those requirements? And the planning board and. Code is uh okay with it, we're okay with that?
I mean, would we be able to defer to to planning and and have them prove it?
Yes. That's right, Tito, right? You guys would review it and yes, so go to planning and yeah, alright.
Just so I'm clear, and so Tito knows what you're asking, or the planning department knows what you're asking to do.
Yeah.
You're looking for three rooms that are comparable in size. To the three study existing study rooms shown on the site plan and one additional TV room that's comparable in size, maybe not the exact dimension, but comparable in size. To what's proposed in this plan.
Yes, that's for me, but I can't speak for my fellow board members.
You're okay with that, Mark?
It's really asking you, is that what you're asking? Is that what the chairman is asking?
Alright. Alright, any other? Questions or concerns? Or make a motion? Alright. So this proposal involved the reuse of an existing commercial building, which was a type two action under Seekers, so no further environmental review was required. And I'll make a motion for a conditional approval. Uh, that the requirements for. Site plan modification have been met. Um, the condition that three additional. Rooms roughly the size of the study rooms shown on the plan that we're reviewing. And one additional room, the size of the TV room. Be added. So that there will be a total of two. Uh, TV rooms and six study cubicle areas in the basement. Uh, and that uh that revised plan gets submitted to the planning department for final approval. Alright, there's the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Alright, second by Manny, all in favor? Alright, all opposed? Alright, and Joe's abstaining. So five, five in favor, one opposed and one abstaining.
I'm abstaining until we actually get the next drawing.
Alright.
You may do that, but the motion passed. So it was approved.
Alright.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Compromise. Alright. Alright. Onto our last.
Nick, I'll just make sure I'm not crazy. Um, Boz Construction, forty-five Carroll Street and twenty to twenty-four while ad in James Slocum fifty-nine Carols Court Street, they're on the agenda I had. They're, are they not going on tonight?
There's an updated agenda on Basecamp. Those, those two cases have been tabled and I can tell you why when we get there.
Okay, I missed the updated agenda, sorry.
Nice. Alright, so this is our last public hearing and final deliberation for the applicant Fairview Recovery Services. Project address is one ten Fairview Ave. This is a site plan review for the construction of a twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot building with twenty sleeping units on an existing social service campus in the R two one and two unit dwelling districts. Welcome back.
Evening, everyone. Sarah Campbell, him and Howard and Patel.
Actually, Sarah, before you start, Nick, because I live close geographic proximity to this project, I'm like last month going to recuse myself from discussions and votes.
Alright, thank you.
Also have with me tonight, Ken Gay from Keystone. As the project, the team architect and Patrick Peely is the executive director of Fairview Recovery Service. So as you've indicated, this is a site plan for a new three story building on the existing Fairview Recovery Social Services Campus. The first floor is for, there are three floors, one of which will be for clients, the other two for administrative offices and office space. As you know, I think everyone was here the last time we were here, I'm not sure though. We withdrew our prior application, which proposed construction of the same or similar new building in a parking area to the northeast of the existing building or in the area shown as vacant space. We had, we, we listened and heard to a lot of public concern about the encroachment into that vacant land with both the new building and a parking lot. We also heard the comments from the board which shared a similar concern. Many of the comments suggested that any new construction be done at the corner of Fairview and Merrick, where it is now proposed, where the social service activity is already taking place. And that's exactly what we have done. Just to reflect, refresh your recollection, the property is owned R three multi-unit dwelling. So the planned character of this area is expressed by the zoning regulations is multi-unit dwelling. The social service operation for this location has been in existence for over one hundred years and to our knowledge, there have been no negative client interactions, at least as long as Patrick can remember. It's pretty old. So you received a rather extensive packet of information in support of the application and I just want to briefly go through some of it. Just hit the high point. This one that you look at sideways has a blue bands on it, talks about the existing and proposed conditions. So right now for the Monday through Friday time period, there are thirty four staff people on the site. We're proposing an addition of twenty residents or clients and that would bring eleven additional staff people to the site at the maximum timeframe where people are there. That changes a little bit, the staffing is a little bit staggered. Weekends, we'd be adding three additional staff people from the current numbers. The facility is currently licensed for forty-eight clients. That number would increase to sixty-eight clients. So again, twenty potential new clients. You can see in looking at the existing conditions that the facility is rarely actually full. So at the point where this document was prepared, there were a license for forty-eight, but actually thirty-one on site. So we expect to that trend would still continue. In terms of density, so if you look at the density requirements in the R three district, we do not require any variance relief. We fall far below any of the density regulations. Seventy percent, for example, lot coverage is permitted in the R three district. We're at thirty-five percent. In fact, we're below the forty percent max coverage allowed in the R one and R two districts, which are the single family residential zoning district. We also did an analysis of an apartment development in a, in a similar location or the similar site. Because that's what would be permitted on the site as of right would be apartments. You'd be looking at the, in, in the range of two hundred and thirty occupants to the site. If you were to develop it into apartment living. Again, we're proposing forty-five maximum staff at the site at given, at any given time and sixty-eight clients, so one hundred and thirteen people from eighty-two currently, not, not a big jump. And in addition, staff does service the community as well. So they're not always at this location all day. It's not a, it's not a nine to five job. They're kind of circulating through the community. We also did a parking analysis for you. We propose fifty-six parking spaces. There are currently twenty-nine. One of the comments that we heard from, from the community was concerned about on-street parking around the neighborhood. So we tried to address that by dramatically increases, increasing by twenty-nine spaces. Clients are not permitted to have cars at this location, so there are actually no cars at all for, for the clients of the facility. We'd need twice that number of parking spaces if the site were to be developed into the R three apartment use. Again, just to remind you that there is a building on site that would be demolished, the Merrick Street House. So we're taking down a building and putting up a building. So we did that, we really, we really made an effort to try to address parking. We also did a traffic analysis, like maybe it would be better called a traffic summary. We did some traffic counts. The nice thing about where the building is located now is that it doesn't change the traffic pattern in the neighborhood. So that there would be no reason for anyone to be going on to East Street or Clapham Street as the prior design would have required. The, the in and out would be focused in the same exact location that it is focused now. And again, the additional eleven staff are arrive and depart at all different times during the day. So it's not, they're not all coming at once. The existing and the proposed traffic volumes are well below the capacity of the road and will honestly be negligible. There's also some just internal reductions of traffic in and out. Right now, meals are transported off-site to another location. But that will all be done onsite on the campus. So you won't have deliveries coming in and out of the facility. That, and that happens six, there are six trips a day in and out, seven days a week, that would be reduced. We, we did an analysis, which I really don't want to go through all these numbers because I know they're, it's hard to process them unless they mean something to you. But the information is all in the record. You know, for a typical household and apartment living, you'd be looking at over a thousand trips per day, per day for the apartment development versus, you know, two hundred and forty state trips a day. So we're less than a quarter of of what would be allowed in the R three zoning. Aesthetically, I think this was probably one of the biggest concern that the building is, can you show me a nice picture of the building? Might as well show the nice pictures since they have. It's been residentially designed to be attractive and fit into the neighborhood. There's landscaping and we do have a new updated plan. Could you just pass that out to the board? The updated plan addresses some concerns we heard at a prior meeting. There's landscaping and dark sky compliant lighting, not only for the new location, but as a part of this proposal, the applicant will remove all existing site lighting and put new dyke dark sky compliant lighting on the site to improve any lighting concern. Again, we have landscaping, a five-foot buffer around the parking areas and a screen of evergreen planting on the northern property line facing Clapham. We've really made an effort to address the concerns expressed by both you and the community. And we believe that this revised plan respects the neighborhood, respects the concerns that you have made and also respects the community service nature of this property, its history and the need in the community for these folks that are seeking assistance. And just to be clear, this is not a crisis location. This is a referral based location. So if someone's in a crisis, they're having an issue, this is not where they come. They go to a hospital. They go to a hospital, they are treated for that crisis. And then as part of a rehabilitation or rehab effort, they come to this location. So this is a voluntary thing. These are people who are seeking treatment. I, I always stay in situations like that, like this. You know, the people seeking treatment are the ones we need to worry about. It's the people that aren't seeking treatment that, that, you know, are, tends to be more of a challenge. So we hope that you like the new plan. We are here to answer your questions. If you have any, or if you have any program questions, obviously Patrick is here as well.
Alright. Any questions? Alright, Mario's up.
Can you show on a map where the original building, the, the previous, yeah, where, where was that going to be on there previously? Up by the road. So where the, where you're proposing it now, is, is there a parking lot there now or is that a new?
The yellow thing is the new building.
That's the building, but that parking lot is there now? And, and are the, the two, the two proposals were similar in size? Thank you. And you've addressed the lighting concerns. You, you're doing some, you call it dark lighting?
Sky compliant lighting. Yeah, we provided you a catalog cut of the actual fixture, so you can actually see what looks like.
Alright, well.
You also just done lighting just for one, you know, so this area is already lit. It, it was the real concern, I think, was lighting this vacant space, which has not been previously left. We don't, we don't plan to put lights up there, just lighting where we're building.
Alright. Well, let's do the public hearing and see if there's anybody who'd like to speak about the project. Alright, so this is the public hearing for the applicant Fairview Recovery Services. The project address is one ten Fairview Ave. This is a site plan review for the construction of a twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot building with twenty sleeping units on an existing social services campus in the R two one and two unit dwelling district. If there's anyone who would like to speak about the project, yep, please come to the microphone.
Can you hear me? Okay?
Yep.
My name is Daniel Grassi. I live at one twenty-one Fairview Avenue. I'm directly impacted by this. I live right on the corner where Clapham Street ends at Fairview Avenue. And I, I made comments before at the previous hearing. I made a, I may, I have a few talking points. First of all, this project has already been rejected by the planning department. And the, the, the changes that they have made, back in July, we had an extensive hearing about this matter. It's a, it's a twenty-bed crisis center facility. And the new plans they have doesn't really change the core problem with this construction. It's a twenty-bed crisis center facility. It's very seriously addicted patients. And they're all going to be in the same building. It's the same block and it's the same neighborhood. And they only, the building has only been moved a few feet, really. It's just from one side to the other side of the lot. It's the same problem, construction and every resident in the neighborhood opposes it. It's, it's not acceptable on any level. In fact, as I said back in July, I can't believe anyone's taking it seriously. This is an outrageous proposal for this neighborhood. We have a quiet residential neighborhood and they want to take twenty troubled addicts and put them in a crisis center in the middle of our neighborhood. And the sole motivation for this construction is convenience. They want to consolidate their operations. Well, that's well and good. What our position is that this consolidation should occur in another location. This is a completely inappropriate construction for this neighborhood under any circumstances. And I've spoken to almost everyone in the neighborhood. There, there, it's, it's not acceptable on any level. It's just outrageous. It's huge. It's an oversized project. The project would make our neighborhood unlivable for residential homeowners. It would reduce the market value of our properties to zero. This neighborhood would become the Fairview Recovery Neighborhood inhabited by drug addicted individuals receiving rehab services funded ironically by us. The claims and assertions made by Fairview Recovery Services in this proposal cannot be taken at face value. And we say that because we have experience with the previous construction on eight Clapham Street. They have an eight-bed women's residence facility that was built a couple of years ago. Now, they originally sold this project as a respite for mothers and their children. That's how they got it passed. They made, they said, oh, this is going to be for mothers and their children. And a lot of neighbors said, well, that's a good thing. We're not going to oppose it. Well, as soon as that building went up, within six months, that program was gone. It just abruptly ended without explanation. It's gone. Also, as part of that construction on Clapham Street, they assured us there would be absolutely zero impact to traffic and parking. They would say there would be no change in traffic patterns. I can tell you, within one week of the opening of that building, traffic doubled. And during the warmer months, it triples. They also had on-street parking all over the place, which would still be going on, except that there was a fire emergency there. The fire trucks couldn't get access to the building because there were so many cars parked on the street. So they, they got signs put up within a week. No parking signs on Clapham Street. Thank goodness. Even with the current populations at Fairview Recovery, ambulances are a regular occurrence in this neighborhood. sirens all the time, ambulance calls up to the facility and the various units. Very frequently. At the current level, we, we resident, we see drug dealers on foot and in their cars. Loitering in the neighborhood. Waiting for people to sneak out of the facility to buy drugs. This has happened several times. Also. See. Oh, also people below the neighborhood on Fairview are going to be impacted by the increase in traffic. Coming up Fairview. Traffic will definitely increase. There's no doubt about it. And also, as Mr. Maz is going to mention, the clients that are going to be serviced. By this proposed construction, there's absolutely nothing for them to do in our neighborhood. Okay, unlike a setting in the center city. There is no recreation. There are no parks. There are no stores. There are no supermarkets. It's posted private wooded areas with no sidewalks. And the only thing people can do now, which is what they're doing now, is wander around the neighborhood. Smoking and vaping and glaring at the resident homeowners that they come across. And it's very intimidating and we don't feel safe. And my final comment is the city of Binghamton must protect this presidential community. The city has to support and bolster its base of taxpaying homeowners.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Anthony Mazum. I live at eleven Clapham Street. I lived at that residence for over fifty years now. All right, when I moved there, my wife and I moved there, all right, there were very few. Houses that were in that area. In fact, there were only eight houses in the area. Okay. Since then. Okay. Other houses have, have increased in the area. Specifically, if you look at. Around the area that they're talking about, this East Street, Clapham. Fairview and Merrick, there are now ten houses. Okay. Up above, there's something called Addison Court. Twenty more houses. Up above, there are now a senior living facility. The last time we were here, or really it was done virtually. A meeting was held where this was discussed. Now, the house, the building wasn't where it is now. In fact, it was located where. The people who were occupying it can live right, can look right into my house, my kitchen, my living room. That was their plan. It was voted down. It was voted down. The minutes of that meeting. And the conclusions reached. Excuse me. And all the letters that you received, okay, in opposition to that project before, should be part of this meeting. It should be included in this meeting. And when you review whether or not you want to agree with whether this should go forward or not. Those, those decisions or those letters, everything should be part of this meeting right here. There's an issue here, all right, that when they, when they put their plan together here. They're very selective in their wording, you know, they, they gave you about fifty pages of paper here. Some of it's just totally inaccurate, right? I teach statistics at SUNY Broom. I taught statistics at SUNY Broom. I know I'm a tutor of statistics. I'm well recognized over there. You can go over there, know my name for statistics, right? They put together a scenario where they, and if you look in the paperwork, it's there. Where they did an analysis of cars coming in and off these streets. Off Fairview. And it was from six thirty to nine o'clock. Somebody took a statistics and I know you have. And you know, that's an inaccurate, actually biased survey. It's meaningless. Coca-Cola doesn't go and, and when they analyze how many cans of Coke they, they sell in a particular Weiss market and just do a study from six thirty to nine o'clock. One day. That doesn't tell you how many cans of soda they're going to sell. That doesn't tell you how much traffic is going to be on this street. Everything that's in that contents package that you've seen. Okay, concerns. Them. People that they want. To put up there. They said that they made, there was a statement made that the people that are going to go up there. Are, it's not the drug addicts. Well. Go take a look at the people that are residing at one sixteen Fairview Avenue. Repeat offenders. And there's an individual in there that I'm not going to tell you, I won't use any other words. They talk about the lighting. They never said they were going to put any lighting in there when they put that. The women's facility. And I'll go take a look at the lighting that bombs the land that I own, my wife and I. We paid for that land. We saved money to buy the land, right? They compromised the land. They compromised it. And now, and they don't even consider that. They don't even consider that as residential. The residential part of that, and I want to tell you, the people that are living up there right now are very honest, hardworking people, right? They mow their lawns, they plant flowers. They have a right. To be safe. That was an issue before. There was a, that was an issue that was considered by all of you on the planning board before. And the, and the result was, I believe, right, and I didn't talk to any of you, right? But I know one thing for sure, there's at least one woman up there who wrote you a letter. That should be part of these meetings. And she said, elderly woman, that she did not feel safe. And I could tell you, there's more than one elderly people, women, that do not feel safe. East Hills is a senior living facility. The people that are living up there are seniors. They're elderly. They have a right to be safe. Don't they? Show me one piece of paper in there. That they gave you. That approached, that talked about safety. It talked about lighting. You see the lighting that's up there now. It floods, it's floodlights. Nothing in their original post above floodlights. It was supposed to be totally transparent to people who live there. You know, nothing was gonna, you, you wouldn't even know it's there. I got news for you. We know it's there. There's been police cars up there. All right. There's been police cars. They, and they walk around, and I, I'm not saying they don't have a right to walk around. But when they walk around. They scare people. All of the living, all of the residences, which they, they don't even admit to be residents up there. There's sixty-two housing developments up there, sixty-two. Now, if there's approximately one and a half people in every residence, there's a hundred people up there. They have a right to be safe. It's not safe now. It's not safe now with the people who are there. The people at one sixteen Fairview and the people at eight Clapham. They're going to put twenty more up there. Twenty more. How do you think those people who are living up there and paying taxes? How do you think they're going to feel about their safety? This report, I, you know, I tried to put it together. I honestly tried to put it together. And if you look at it, there's a lot of numbers that they put forth. A lot of numbers. But when you try to put those numbers together, it's like putting ten puzzles together, a traffic puzzle, a puzzle. You know? And all the other type of puzzles that they, you know, a zoning ordinance, so right? They don't even, the zoning ordinance, they, they don't even pay attention to. They put this number two hundred feet. They think everything is within two hundred feet of their property. I got news for you, right? There's, there's. Sixty-two housing complexes up there. That they don't. Nice, I don't, they, they use the numbers in there. But they never talk about. And you know. What's even more embarrassing to me. When I was reading that, is they, they use words that they feel. Their entitlement, they're entitled to this. People that live up there are entitled to also safety. Traffic. You know, they're entitled to that too. They're entitled more to it. These people are recipients of the money. We live, who live up there, they give them the money. Which they survive. We give them money to survive. You refused it before. You disapproved it before. You should do it again. Let these people who live up there. Who are mowing their lawns, who are planting the flowers, who are elderly. And live up there in safety for God's sakes. Let them live up there. And in faith. What they need to do here, in my opinion, is to relocate. The best thing they can do for the people they're trying to service is to relocate into a facility which. Binghamton has not been a growth facility lately. They, I don't know if the sheltered workshop is available, but look at what the VA did. Look what the VA did across the street. They, they, they got their hands on that facility. They modernized it. They put a nice parking lot in there. And look at what they've done for the city. They promoted the city. And the VA men and women who work in there. And get the benefits of there. It's working. It's done something for Binghamton. They, what they need to do, in my opinion, is close this down. As, as, as maybe. Close it down. Relocate in the sheltered workshop. It's a, it's a big building. All right, it's a big building. It's close to libraries, it's close to. Churches. They could put recreational facilities in there. Here, they don't allow people to visit. There, they can set up a room where their families, their spouses can come and visit. They can go to work over at the, at the. I guess my time is up, isn't it?
We appreciate the comments though, for sure, but yes, we do.
I, I do appreciate and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else? All right.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Becky Hewing. And I live at twenty-two Clapham Street with my husband Dan. And we built our house up there. Twenty-nine years ago. A little over. We had a young family to raise them there and it was great. Because it was just up a little bit. And away from downtown Robinson Street in the busy parts of. The east side. But we love the east side. So I'm going to try to be brief, but I'm going to read the first two letters that I did write, so you have an idea, although you've probably heard them. And a lot of the. Would touch on the same. Facts, but this is just coming from me as a mother and a grandmother. With nine grandchildren that do play in my big yard that I do have up there. So I'm writing in regard to the proposed application of the Fairview Recovery Service's site review. I have many concerns for this proposed expansion and it was fourteen to eighteen Clapham Street, but it's still one big block, so you have to understand, it's just a big block. We, we've lived there for over twenty-nine years. On this quiet and out of the way. Area from the busy traffic from Robinson and Court Street. My first concern involved safety. Clapham Street and Fairview Ave, which immediately turned into Pope's Ravine going north. If any of you've ever been up that way. The rural roads, they really are. In the wintertime, you can barely get two cars. To go on the road. Increased car and pedestrian traffic will increase potential for accidents and liability in this area. There are no sidewalks, no sidewalk. Limited visibility and treacherous winter roads are a big concern because as you go down, whether it's Merrick or Clapham. If you go down to Fairview Ave, you have immediately Pope's Ravine, which comes around and turns. And there's so many times. That those cars come through. That they're going, you know. People go fast or the parked cars are there. And it, Clapham and Merrick come down and dip. So in the wintertime. I've done it and I only drive five miles an hour down that hill where you slip right across the road. So it is very, it is not. It's not a good place in the wintertime to drive and with increased cars and traffic. I've, we always are concerned about that. We have never held issue with Fairview Recovery. Service, I really haven't and. They did deal with the green space because my house is twenty-two and then there is. Woods, basically a lot in woods and then the. Fairview Ave is where the corner of Clapham and East Street. And then they did address that with the second letter. That they were going to put the driveway there, which again, East Street is. A rural road, basically. And, and you just, you know, cars turning left, turning right. And I know they say it's going to. Decrease now on Clapham, but you can't stop people from going around the block and driving. It just, it, it's what it's going to be. There's going to be. More cars there. And I have noticed in the past couple of years, there's more foot traffic. And the clients, they do, they walk around, especially in the warmer weather. Around the blocks, smoking and vaping. And, and it's just, I'm out in my yard a lot. And when you see these large groups of people, it just really. Gives you, gives you concern and. They're transient people. They're not permanent residents. It's a residential area. And these people do come and go. And I'm all for recovery. I've really have never had an issue. Until the last building they put up for the women with their children. As a matter of fact, I was for that. I thought that was great. Would have better, how better to recover and get into a normal life than to have your children with you? So I was. For that. Until it didn't really. Happen. So they build something, say it's one thing, and that's my worry is what will. This next thing be? They'll build this. Now they're, they're leaving the green space for us, for our. Up above us. But what are they going to do at the next meeting when they decide they want another building put up and/or a parking lot? They're going to need, they, they just keep expanding. And. The lack of privacy is what gives me such an easy. Feeling at my, at my home. And personal safety is, is a concern for me. And actually, the elderly woman, she wrote a little. Email to Tito. And Tito, you've been wonderful. I just have to say, thank you for always listening to me. I really appreciate that. It's very kind. And. And I just don't understand because it's a commercial basic. It's not a business, but it's commercially what they're building there. And that is never really, I know they talk about the, the R three putting up. Apartment complexes. It can be done for that, but this is a business and you have people coming, you have to, you know, cover shifts. I know they say that there's. Only eleven more people that are going to be there, but I don't know. They say. I just don't know. It really, it really concerns me. And. I just can't believe that state hospital, it has already. Rehab services up there. Wouldn't it be beautiful to put it up there? And. I'm getting off track a little bit, but one of the biggest concerns that I had, it's in my second letter, which I probably won't. Get on to, but. When they built the elderly. Housing up above us for the disabled and elderly, the one thing they did not do before they approved that and put that building up there. Was to see if the city buses couldn't get up there. So they built it. And then they found out they couldn't put city buses up there. So for any of these people, if they, and they do, they have jobs they go to, they have classes they go to, whatever they do, they have to walk. It's all the way down Fairview Ave, which is probably. Quarter of a mile maybe to get to Robinson Street to get the bus stop. So it's not even like there is good access to public transportation there. So you, you know, they've got to walk down there to get a bus. And even the disabled people above me has, has always been a concern for me. Because you, we have a couple of people up there that don't have cars. So this is, it's built, they've moved in. It's after they realized they can't get buses up there. And they go down Clapham Street. Sometimes they cross over east and go Merrick, which they're steep hills. And the one caregiver has to walk. Now, and this isn't in the studies, you don't know about them, but they have to walk the wheelchair backwards. He walks backwards with the client in the chair. To get down the hill. So when he pushes them down, he doesn't tip out. And there's two people with electric wheelchairs that I, I just. Go out of my mind when I see him driving down the hill. It really scares me, but that's. It wasn't made to, to have that kind of traffic in it. And, and those are the safety concerns too, if you've got people driving up and down that road. I just don't see how it benefits our, our neighborhood. Um, I just don't see how it benefits our, our neighborhood. Um, and I do, I do get a little concerned of who is rehabbing up there, we don't know, are there criminal histories? Are there other things that we don't know about? And if they're not at capacity, why do they need to build more? I don't understand that, if you're not always at capacity, what is the need for that at that point? I am fine with who's there, and when that first started out, that was Dr. Bolt was a psychiatrist for Binghamton and his wife, Mrs. Bolt. And that's who we bought our property from. He started in that biz, that first building on Fairview Ave was his home and it became his office. And then um, after we moved in, there was another, the gray building on Merrick, the one I think they're gonna tear down. He did have an operation going out of there, he also worked out at State Hospital. And then um, from there, we moved in. And then they just, they kept building, they kept building. And again, I was fine until after this last building. And with the amount of uh, clients that, that are around there, and we don't know what they're doing. And Pope's Ravine can be a dangerous spot, driving through it. But also, it is a place where people stop and park and you don't know what's going on in that ravine. You have no idea, and there are cars that just park on E Street and park on Clapham Street. And you just kinda look and watch, I've been tempted to take a couple license plates down, but I didn't. Cause you just don't know, they're not your neighbors, you know? With that said. A concerned resident and taxpayer. And um, I really, I, I think this expansion is just going a little bit too far at this point in time now.
All right.
So thank you all very much for listening and I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else? All right.
Hi, my name is Kathy Gross, I live at fifteen Merrick, right up the street. Um, I truly appreciate what you've done to rearrange your, you know, your plan. If they'd listened to what we had said before about my, my backyard with the, against the open lot that they were gonna put the driveway in. Um, my concern is many of the things that have already been said, but the expansion, you know, the ladies' um, house. Um, you know, it's a wonderful place. But it keeps going and it keeps going and it keeps going and, you know, we do live there. I, I'm a newbie in the neighborhood and I've been there nineteen years. So it's a very old residential neighborhood with lovely quiet people. But um, why do we have to build so much again? I understand that, but I truly appreciate that they listened to us about moving their buildings. But again, if they're not at capacity, why do we have to do this? And having ambulance come to my house in the last ten years several times. My concern is if they need an ambulance and there are ambulances up there in the middle of the night, um, during the day. There are ambulances up there, if you are where they are now on Court Street, around the corner, um, Room. Some Room ambulance, um, they're a quarter or half mile from Superior and the fire department's gonna be right next door to them. You know, with the fire equipment and a med, medic. Um, if the, the city of Binghamton's ambulance is on the east side, you get it in three minutes. Then they're done there. If it's not, it takes quite a while. But another concern that just dawned on me is when you come down Merrick Street, right where their driveway is for the parking lot. There are so many underground springs, it's torturous in the winter. Because the, it's like the, it's in Fairview, it's right there, and the underground springs. It are terrible to try to get through. Um, and if you're going up Clapham, it's just as bad. But the underground screams, screams right underneath Merrick Street at their parking lot are treacherous. Um, again, I really appreciate what you guys have done to look at and to listen to the neighborhood. But there are many still concerns about why does it have to be there now? If you're not fully um, at capacity, why do you need a new place? Um, you know, that's the, you know, please consider the neighborhood.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else who would like to speak about the project? All right, seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. All right, this is Chance to Respond.
Thank you. Um, just to correct a, a few mistakes, I believe. Um, for the record, the project was not denied by you, um, we withdrew the application. Um, this is not a crisis center, as I've indicated to you. I did forget to tell you an important thing, and I'm glad one of the neighbors brought it up. We have built into this project smoking areas on site. So kind of if you can just show them where they are. Um, that was another thing that we heard loud and clear, so um, we did build those into the plan. Um. Um, I, I thought it was interesting to hear some of the history of the neighborhood, which I didn't actually know before. Um, talking about eight houses, now there are ten houses, twenty additional houses and a senior living facility. Um, that to me, a, a, and that all occurred after the facility is already in location, in its location. That, um, that to me was actually a really good um, sign that additional construction has happened in the neighborhood. After this facility has already been in location for, you know, many, many, many years. Um, and just, just also to qualify some of the documentation that we provided to you from experts. Um, the parking information was prepared by the dormitory, the dormitory authority architect. Um, and the, the location was approved by the Office of Addiction Services of the state agency. So there has been uh, state oversight over the project. Um, and also just to make clear, and I've checked with Patrick twice on this. Um, to our knowledge, to Patrick's knowledge, there have been no reports of violence. The police have not been called ever with respect to this facility. Um. There was a question about what could happen with the green space that's there now. If they didn't hear loud and clear the last time around that that green space will be a very difficult development ever. I don't know what else could be said. But feel, rest assured that should there ever be a, a project proposed in that area. We'd have to go through this very same process and come back to you um, for your review and approval. Um, also, just as a clarification, the clients do not work at this location, they do not work offsite. Um, and they are always accompanied onsite or in the area. Um, they do, they are allowed to go out and go for a walk, and they are allowed to get some fresh air. Um, but they are always accompanied by staff members, they are not ever by themselves. And I think maybe the last most positive thing that I heard um, was what a lovely quiet area this is. Um, I don't think that's gonna change um, with the addition of, of eleven. Staff members and, and twenty residents that apparently, given the testimony of those who've lived there. Um, has worked well in the neighborhood uh, for many, many years. Um, and they, they've been a great neighbor. Um, and I think that was all I had to add with it.
All right.
And I think that's it.
Yeah, it was a, a miscommunication is the why they were being called up there, but um.
I'm happy to crack that too, they've never been, we've never had an interaction with neighbors.
Okay. All right, um.
I think, was there anything else? Can you want to? We really do hope that the additional parking will relieve the concerns. But I mean, it's just. It is just untrue that the addition of, of this small amount of people is gonna materially change the traffic patterns in the area. In fact, we worked really hard to create a, a plan where there would be no access beyond the access that's currently there. Um, these aren't people that get visitors often. Um, these are, you know, people in a treatment program, it's a vigorous program, it's a, it's a very well-controlled program. Um, and they're there because they want help and we're, you know, we believe that everyone's entitled to that. They're also citizens and uh, of Room County. Um. And getting the treatment that they need is really only a benefit to all of us.
All right. What, what is, what's your response to the comment about the woman and, the woman and children program that didn't uh? That never really existed or took off or did what it was supposed to do?
All the women.
I'm, I'm sorry, could, could you speak into the microphone?
The program did exist, it was a combination of single women and women with their children. The women with their children were only two uh, beds. So it was two moms could have their kids with them. We unfortunately had a deaf out in supportive living, which is another program of our offsite. Um, and we were advised to liability-wise to not have that program any longer. So that's why the, that's why it unfortunately went, if we didn't have it any longer.
All right, any questions or comments? About the proposal?
Has there, has there been consideration to doing this offsite? I mean, into, into looking into some of the areas that are available around the. I mean, even, even Robinson, you're not far from Robinson Street, right? Into more of a more. I don't know, I guess I don't know what we're looking for.
I know, it's, it's a hard conversation to have, I think, and it's um. Well, I do know that the building on Court Street has been sold, that is being um, already renovated into, uh, I, I, a gentleman mentioned that a few times. Into supportive housing, permanent supportive housing. Um. Yes, they've looked at other locations. Um, the, the nice thing about this location is the infrastructure for the treatment is available already there. Um, and so it provides a streamline of services that wouldn't have to be separated into different areas as it is now. Um. And, and I, you know, with all respect, this is a, a site plan review and, and um, alternate locations. It, I mean, of course, you could probably find alternate locations. It's not what this applicant has chosen to do. I, I don't, I don't mean to say that it's not something to consider, but um, that it's kind of like one of those. It's a good thing to do, but just not in my yard, you know, my backyard. Um, I think in my backyard, we have, for example, a uh, a treatment facility, a group home. I mean, you would never in a million years know that, that, that people are there, that they're, you know, and they're supervised and they're out walking around. And I mean, I don't feel particularly unsafe, no more unsafe than I would feel. Um, you know, walking in a dark downtown Binghamton at certain hours of the night. So I, I think that that's a tough conversation to have, but yes, they have looked at other locations.
It came to me, what, what? What um, facilitated this? What, what made you decide that you needed twenty beds for twenty more beds? Or I mean, I mean, this isn't um, this isn't a state thing or a federal thing, this is something that. You're doing on your own, correct? You get, you get, you get um, reimbursement for these services that you're, these patients get to have insurance and things for this.
Well, Medicaid.
So this, does the state have to come in and, and, and look at the facility and approve the fact that you wanna put in twenty more beds and this sort of thing? And they've done that?
New beds, they're existing beds, so we're not adding to our population, we're just replacing, we're moving physical location. Um, to like Sarah said, for continuum of care. Um, fiscal reasons, um, we have two, it's offsite, so we're always going offsite. Uh, taking food and that would cut down on all of that, we wouldn't have to send other staff down to this other location. We would be all in one location for the, for the two levels of care that we provide there. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, DASNY oversees uh, any project, so DASNY would be involved in this project.
Just, just for the board member, maybe they all know, but just for their education, can you explain to us what DASNY is?
It's the Dormitory Authority. That's. It's the Office of Alcohol and Substance Use Services.
And may I ask a question? Um, you know, I keep getting back to the twenty, twenty beds, it seems like such a, a giant process of, you know, obviously some disruption, neighborhood, et cetera, twenty beds. So what, why the twenty beds? What, how do we get there? Especially, I get that you're saying you're, you're doing different services, but it would seem like if you're gonna do an expansion, do an expansion, not for you guys. But um, my point being, twenty beds seems like, like an odd thing.
The twenty beds are already, what we're licensed for at the other location.
So what about an expansion in five years? Once your licensing moves up there, would there be uh, an expansion that you would be anticipating?
No.
Okay, is there a room for expansion within this um, the yellowy-orange building?
No.
Okay.
It was tough. And, and brought up great concerns, and that's why we withdrew our options. In a way, we need to look at the site project. Make it more palatable for.
And, and in that previous meeting, that's what we did listen to, was the residents saying, why aren't you putting that on the corner? There wouldn't be resistance if we put it on the corner.
All right. Uh, can you remind us, did you need any variances or anything for this uh? So you, yeah, so you're meeting the code requirements and, okay. All right. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, well. In the interest of moving things along. I'm gonna make a motion under seeker for a negative declaration. Um, and just see what happens, so uh. Um, neg.
Did we declare what type of action it is first?
I assumed to get here, we, yeah, we did at the first meeting.
Very, I'm sorry, I wasn't here last month, so that's my, my fault.
Nice, Brian callously leaves us and then he's trying to play catch-up. Uh, yes, so there was, this was a seeker unlisted action. All right, so I'll make a motion for a negative declaration, negative declaration based on the following. Um, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan? Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation, no or small impact? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Say, small impact? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Yes, but. In my opinion, it's a small impact based on the revised site plan. That located the building in the corner of Fairview Ave and Merrick Street instead of in the green space back by Clapham Street. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics to cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkways? So a small impact. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No or small impact. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources like wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality of flora fauna? No or small impact. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No or small impact. And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. So based on those, I'll make a negative, a motion for a negative declaration for seeker. All right, second by Manny, all in favor? All right, that's six in favor, zero opposed. All right, and then. I'll make a motion that the requirements for the site plan review have been met. Are there any conditional requests or? No, all right, so I'll make a motion that the requirements for the site plan review have been met. All right, there's a second by Manny, so all in favor? Everyone leave your hands up just to make sure. Okay, all right. All right, five in favor and all opposed. All right, and one opposed. All right, that's a five to one. You're welcome. Before you guys leave, just so everybody knows, you kind of already have addressed it. And I think I addressed it in the last time we went through this. But for me personally, if you do come back again for this property, it's a definite no for me. You, you've reached the saturation point on this property for me. I can't speak for anybody else, but. All right. All right. All right, let's get Brian back down here. Oh my God, did he leave? Oh, I'm sorry, Chris. There he is. Not Brian, Chris. Uh, no, I think. Oh, there's nobody about the zoning change coming up, or is that Tito? All right, I guess you can turn. Tito's gonna be up here in a second. All right, so that concludes public hearings and deliberations. So the next item on the agenda is other business. And we're gonna be talking about the rezoning of one fifteen to one thirty-five Conklin Ave.
So the city is looking to rezone the Crowley plant at one thirty-five Conklin Ave. That's the main objective here. Right now it's zones industrial, light and medium industrial, which was, does not allow residential use. So rezoning it to C four neighborhood commercial, which is what the other side of Conklin Ave is. Would allow a commercial on the ground floor. Or light industrial on the ground floor and apartments elsewhere in the building. So the city has some interest in redeveloping this for housing. And we're trying to make that allowed by rezoning it. One fifteen and one twenty-five Conklin are not important for that, but it would make no sense to leave those as industrial right now. It's a restaurant and a parking lot for that restaurant. And if we rezone one thirty-five Conklin Ave, then you would have that restaurant on a little industrial island. That is not appropriate in the first place, so we're including that as part of this. But that's the gist of it. We want to rezone the Crowley plant to allow it to be redeveloped.
Just, just. Just because I'm nosy and curious, so if we did not approve this, what happens to the Park Diner? Are they, are they then in violation of the zoning? Where they're currently located?
No, a restaurant is allowed in that, in that zoning district.
A restaurant is out in that zone, it would also be considered pre-existing. Okay.
Just from the map that was included, it looks like that industrial area might continue up the river a little bit, does it? Or is this just this tiny little pocket?
It does, but if you could look further northeast, there is more C four. There's more commercial between this and the rest of the industrial land. It's not really connected, it's just they made the river part of that zoning district. But it's physically separated from the rest of the industrial uses, like on Jackson and in that area.
That's what I was just gonna say, I think at one point, if you were to do research and go back for old maps, the area of Jackson. Back by like where the fire training center is, that area was all sort of industrial. And it wrapped up around where the dog shelter now is, where the rabies, over to the Crowleys, and that was all one kind of stretch. There's been significant changes in that neighborhood going from Jackson over to. Which is why we're asking for a change.
Okay. All right, anybody vehemently opposed to this? Question, is, Tito, you mentioned the city is done wanting to get the area developed? Are there actual, and not to get into detail, but there's actual developers interested in doing the work?
Uh, there are. Trying to think how much I can say.
No, don't, that's fine.
There are developers in this, in the city is pursuing state funding to, to also help facilitate that.
Thank you. Is it Tito Martinez Development that's interested in?
No, no comment.
All right, anybody opposed to making a motion or a recommendation? All right, you want us to do like a through the checklist thing or?
This is an unlisted action, if you.
All right, let's see if I can find that. All right, can I wrap it up into one motion? A, a motion to recommend approval of the zoning change and a negative declaration under seeker based on the following. All right, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No, or small impact? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use of intensity of use of land, no or small impact? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small impact? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics to cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkways, no or small impact? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies, public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to the natural resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed, proposed action have, create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. All right, so based on all that, motion for negative declaration under seeker. And a recommendation for approval of the zoning change to the council. All right, seconded by Chris, all in favor? All right, seven in favor, zero opposed. All right. Uh, all right, well, I think that's it. Anybody else have any other business? Chris looks like he's got something.
Each year, we're looking at moving to second Tuesdays pending. Scheduling fights within this building.
That, as of right now, that's what it is. We're, we're hoping to change that. So possibly have planning commission go the first Tuesday, ZBA go the second Tuesday.
So first Tuesday is what you're looking at for us?
We, we may change that if that's, if, does that make a difference to you all first or second Tuesday? Are they both pretty much the same?
It'd work a little bit better for me.
First works better.
I'm okay, as long as I know block on Tuesdays.
Okay, so we'll, we'll figure it out before the end of the week.
Okay.
Because some staff are available first Tuesday and not second, and so we're. I'll just check with the ZBA. And we'll let you know before the end of the week. It'll be either the first Tuesday or the second Tuesday.
All right, and what's happening with You Save Auto? Because it's getting, it looks like it's getting worse over there. More vehicles, like some of the vehicles had babies and now have.
Yes.
I thought I saw a sign, Nick wants more wreckers here.
The zoning officer is off for the rest of the year, so we're, we're pursuing that.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-three is the year of You Save.
It just hurts because they came here, sat in front of us and lied to us and.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn? Yep, Joe makes the motion. Everyone approve? Yeah. Wait, Paul, is this, is this it for us? Oh, I was gonna bring pizza for, yeah. I'm sorry.